Thank you, thank you. Thank you for all coming for tonight's meeting. Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal, tonight, January 20th, Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, at 6:30 PM. And we are at room 320, Multiservice Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. We also have Zoom. Also, whoever likes to attend, Zoom is open. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. My far right, Mr. Troy Larson, Ms. Veronica DeBeneese, our clerk, Jim Akabachi. To my left, Mr. Richard Sample, myself, the chair, Nazia Al Qalasi, also present. Our building commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner, our town planner on Zoom, Mr. Ken Buckland, also assistant planner, Mrs. Sonia Reposo. We'll start by the minutes. Some quick business to do. On the approval of the minutes, 110-2024.
Read them and I found them acceptable as presented. Motion to approve.
Aye, second.
Okay, we have motion by Jim, second by Rich, for the minutes for January 10, 2024. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. We had 51-23 for Karen DeMichelle on 43 South Boulevard. We're gonna, Councilor, that hearing was set for the 24?
I'm all set, we can reopen it.
Right, so it's just void and null, it don't mean anything. So we're gonna reopen, talk about it in a continued public hearing. So we're gonna push it somewhere in a continued here. Okay, so that's, that's good. Everybody on the same page?
You don't wanna do it right now and get it out of the way? You wanna...
No, moment, I just gotta do something quick. Okay. Okay, why don't we do that? We just continue public hearing. We do the 51-23 for Karen DeMichelle for 43 South Boulevard. We'll, we'll just continue it now and make the decision vote again.
Is it continued to tonight or is it continued to...
It's scheduled for tonight. And I believe the attorney from the neighbors complained that he's gonna be here tonight. Maybe he's on Zoom.
Yeah, that's not my understanding. That rewatching the hearing, you guys were gonna have it on the 10th, but it's actually the 14th, so...
Okay.
Yeah, just keep it on the 14th, it's, it's fine. I want him to say...
Oh, you want 14?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just open it and...
All we have to do is reopen it...
I don't want him to say that we've talked about it again and he wasn't here, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 14.
So it's for the 14?
Yep.
What was originally scheduled for?
So, we, I initially added it to the January 10th. That was a procedural error on my end.
Yeah.
But it was initially continued to February 14.
Okay, not today.
The reason I put it today was just to give, you know, a heads up to whoever needed.
All right, so we can, we continue 14?
Yeah, you just have to reopen it, vote to reopen it.
No, it's...
Yeah, 'cause you closed it and voted on it.
We can reopen it on the 14th, I think. We don't need to open it tonight, do we?
Yeah, let's reopen on 14. I don't think we have to reopen because it's void and null. It was void, it wasn't supposed to be that night.
Yeah, but we should, we should announce that it was voided. But since it's been publicly announced on the 14th, I think we should do it all on the 14th.
You agree?
Yeah, that's fine. Whatever you guys wanna do.
Yeah, let's do that, we do that. Okay, very well. Okay, 3020 Cranberry High, Highway. 39-23 Wareham Cranberry LLC.
All right. I have copies for you guys.
Which one is this? I get the files here, but this is a...
D'Angelo's.
Pardon me? D'Angelo's, okay. The old D'Angelo's. I knew there'd be new information, so...
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street, for the record. If you recall, we continued this hearing because I told you that there was a new end user. My clients obviously own the property. And we introduced this as a restaurant that would be pizza and they would be going through the drive-through. And I didn't tell you who the end user was at that point, but now I can. So we're looking for a tropical smoothie at this location, which we really think would do really well on Cranberry Highway, seeing that there's not really any other healthy options that have a drive-through. Now, nothing's changing in the way of the plan, so it's still the 10-foot drive-through that we're looking for. Our plan that we submitted, though, updated, shows that stacking of cars. That was one of the things that you wanted to see there. And then in the information, I wanted to, you know, give you who is this operator gonna be. So Ms. Vieira is the operator of locations in New Bedford and Fairhaven, and she currently has those. So she's looking to have a location at this site. Having that drive-through again, my understanding, speaking to her, is that it would rarely ever be that many cars stacked. But we wanted to show you, you know, how, how much can go in there. We have the signage showing, you know, in and out, entrance only, exit only. So, you know, we're at the point where we, we still contend that this is just the variance for the drive-through, that it doesn't get to the site plan review threshold. We're looking at a de minimis change of 10, 10 feet, basically. Not changing anything imperviously. So we're just looking for, for this to get approved. And any questions I can talk about? I think we, I'm not sure, I can't see people on Zoom, but my engineer should be here on Zoom. And I'm not sure if the operator's on here as well. Ms. Karen Vieira? Should be Phil Henry.
If they're there, they ask, they, they should put their hands up so he can see their hands waving.
Phil Henry and then Karen Vieira. They are here? Okay, so if you have questions specifically for, like her operations or anything like that, she's here too to speak to that.
I, it doesn't matter for me who operates it. I mean, best of luck for whoever operates it. I still stand that I need site plan. If I wanna hand you a variance for a drive-through, I still need a facade plan. I need to see that, that building upgraded. If we don't do, do it now, there'll be another 50 years like this. So I still stand where I was. Full site plan, facade plans and all that. That's my take into it. I mean, it's, I'm not gonna change my mind over between pizza and smoothie and change my mind.
No, that's fine. I can give you more information why. I, I looked into that and I, I really don't think under the bylaw that we're required to do it. And I think you, I'm not telling you what to do, but I think that that's going above and beyond the requirement.
I don't have to do this, I...
Michener would have put that in his letter. He does it all the time if he believes it's site plan review.
I understand. But if you want, if you want a variance, that's what I want. So otherwise, you won't get my vote. But let's see, maybe the board will give it to you. Don't know. Troy, what do you think of the project?
Well, I tend to agree with you on the exterior and wanting to see what it's gonna be changed to look like. I like seeing the plan for the car stacking. Other than that, I don't really have any questions.
That's, not to add, the stormwater management that was designed in the 60s is completely different than today. But I think we'll see. Veronica?
I, I like seeing it on paper here with the site plan and seeing how the cars are gonna go around the building. But I do actually have to agree with the chairman. It's a change of ownership and the drive-through being added together with that, just... It, to me, I, I don't feel that I am qualified enough to make the determination for this drive-through in any commercial building, really, for the most part, unless it was a huge amount of space all around. And this area does not have a huge amount of space. But again, even then, I feel like commercial drive-throughs should have a site plan review, regardless of whether or not that is in the zoning bylaw. But this particular project, I feel even more strongly just because of location and the tightness of everything around it. And the lot is very small.
It does accommodate it if you do it right. It will handle that much cars, though. If you do, if you do site plan, you do it right, you re... It will accommodate that many cars. But you just have to spend the money and do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna, if you're stuck on site plan, I, I don't wanna argue that. But the other option is just not have a drive-through and then it definitely doesn't change. So I think it's really hard for business owners coming in here and if they're trying to invest in something that's been sitting for a while, to have to do a full site plan on, on a 10-foot bump out for a drive-through.
I, I understand, but this is our chance. This is our only chance to, to fix our highway and our town. Go ahead.
In what you submitted, this plan that shows the 13 cars stacked in the, in the location, it says right on it, site plan. It looks like Civil Design Group LLC has this plan. From the, it's hard, in this size, for me to determine this, but it appears that at least 90, if not 100% of the work that's necessary for us to make a site plan or for us to review the site plan may already be done. It may just be a matter of getting us this plan blown up with, I mean, with how it reflects to our current bylaws. If the drainage is adequate, then Civil Design Group could say, yes, the drainage is good, the lighting is good. These are the parking spaces. It may not, it may not be, I guess what I'm trying to say is it, it may not be as abrasive as what a site plan is. You say site plan, usually it sounds like, you know, going to the dentist. But I think...
Yeah, I mean, I'm obviously very familiar with site plan review. I think that, that there's stormwater management, there's landscape buffers, there's impact statement. There's quite a bit of, I mean, engineering costs that go along with that.
You don't think it's, you don't think it's already done?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
I thought it was...
Again, if you, I'll get to you, Richard, in a sec. I don't have a problem, give you my word, or vote, that will give you the variance. But you gotta, your client has to step up to the plate and bring that building and that site up to date. We have no problem. And you know what that permit, you know what that's, that variance is worth. So we just can't hand it without giving something. I mean, we have to give something, taxpayer. You know, we can't just hand it...
Yeah, I think we should change the bylaw then to, anytime there's a drive-through, it's full site plan.
I know, you can, bring 50 signature, bring it to the warrant and change it. But you live in town, don't you? I mean, would you, don't you rather see better places and stuff? I mean, I'm sure all of us would. But anyway, changing the bylaw, that's not what before us tonight. But let me continue with Richard. Richard?
I'm, I'm good, I have nothing to say.
So that's where we are. I, I think it'll be a great business. I think they'll do good just by having a drive-through. And the place will be a, a, a real success. But they gotta, they can't just put pigs on a pearl and expect us to give it to them like this. Then they go sell it, doesn't work out, they sell it with the variance, then, oh, okay, everybody be, who knows? We need, I mean, it took 40 years to make that highway, the state to fix that highway, put a median. Now it's up to us to make it look better and bring it somehow up to code. And if we don't, every time we hand the permit, another 30, 40 years, God knows how long, you're gonna be seeing the same thing, all dilapidated, parking lot horrible, drainage don't work, landscaping doesn't work. I mean, look at the drive, you gotta drive careful in that parking lot. It's so bad. I go there all the time when it was D'Angelo. I mean, it's like big dips, it's horrible. It needs to be fixed. If they wanna be in business, successful, they have to spend the money. Everybody does. We do grant them, we grant them to Wendy's, Chippoly, Starbucks. They spend millions, you know?
You know, this is a different one, though. This isn't a new construction. But I, I certainly don't wanna get a denial and seem short-sighted with the idea that possibly they wanna go through the site plan review and do all that, so...
We will pull, see how the board feel. If you go through the whole thing, building side, and see how the board feel to giving you variance. If you feel the board are willing, if your client's willing to do what we want them to do. Bring that building nice and you feel the board and we're good with our word, we don't change our word, you know us.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, what do you think, Troy? If they come with a facade plan and site plan, drainage design?
I think it's a good idea. I think, I like the idea of that business.
Yeah.
Because I think it'll be quick, people in and out, it's not gonna back up. I definitely like it.
Veronica?
I definitely don't see it being a big problem myself.
I don't see a big problem either.
I think we're worrying over something that we shouldn't be worrying about right now. But anyway, I don't know what is going back to the taxpayers. The statement about give something back to the taxpayers, is it just the 40G account?
No, no, it's the...
So if we just say, if they gotta just take care of the pavement or whatnot, that's fine. But to force them into it, I, I feel the structure's been there. That's my opinion. I, I don't understand why we are...
What I'm saying for the tax...
Some people just wanna put a business in.
I understand. I know what you're saying. Our responsibility to bring somehow the town to code and to make it look somehow better, this is our responsibility to the taxpayer. This, the 53G account doesn't go to the taxpayer anyway. It goes to spending for our consultant. I'm saying, if this building next to you, you'd want it to look better. If you live next to it or you go by it every day. We don't, we're not against business in town. You know, we're lenient, we give businesses. But we're not gonna let people just put business without site plan and doesn't bring it up to code. That's all, we're not... I mean, I know the building is there, but what we given them, that drive-through worth a lot of money. I don't wanna say how much, but it's worth a lot of money. So a business person has to be able to invest some. Jimmy, what do you think? So before I go, so, but you're okay with the variance if they come up with this, Rich, right?
There's, needs to be more discussion, right? We're still talking about it?
I gotta go to...
I think, what I'm hearing is...
I'm, I'm good with it, the way it's presented, so...
Oh, so you're good with it no matter what?
You're looking at it and saying, change the sign, take down D'Angelo and put up Frosty's slushy drinks and you're good. I think what I'm hearing the chair say is that the parking lot has been, has deteriorated and hasn't been properly maintained and possibly the stormwater retention system is not working properly. And he'd like to know that it is before, before he grants permit. He doesn't wanna have a new business dumping water onto a brand-new highway. And so I think that there's, I think that there's a middle ground here. I get that the applicant doesn't wanna send engineers out there and dig up the parking lot. Is it a, is it a lease or are they buying the property?
Um, well, actually, the operator, she has her, Karen has her hand up, so...
Yeah, so...
I'd like her to chat more about that.
We might be doing her a favor if she can turn to her landlord, if it's a lease, and say, hey, guess what? The town's not real happy with the maintenance on your property. The parking lot needs to be repaired or the stormwater system needs to be upgraded. I'd like to, through everybody, I'd like to ask Karen to let us know if it's a, if it's a lease, is it a purchase? What's the scoop here and who's gonna bear this cost?
Yeah, it's not, I want Karen to speak to that.
Yeah, just give me a minute. For instance, this is the building in town. Very pretty building, so what's wrong with having one here like that? I mean, fixing it like this?
What's wrong is it's not under the bylaw. You're trying to sue us, Sponday.
Listen, I understand. You wanna reopen a sub shop, go back, I'll be, one second. Go back and open like this. I didn't say in the bylaw, this, it's kinda, let's make a deal. You want the variance, I want this. And that's how it is. Unfortunately, there's a, a, drive-through needs a variance. Commissioner, go ahead.
The original plan that I reviewed, I had to ask them to show the vehicles in the queue and they, they showed three. So this is the first time I've seen this plan like this. So looking at this, I would say six spaces for the building and you have 13 for the queue. A queue is not listed in parking regulations, the uses, but I can determine how many spaces they need. So if you add the 13 and the six, you're up to 19 spaces, which would trigger a site plan review. Just my opinion.
Because it is a change of use, is that...
Correct.
Not only it's before nine cars, it's always discretion of the commissioner if it trigger a site plan or not, even three cars. This is where we are. But apparently, all the boards would do with that, with variance. And you want your client to talk?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Karen, she could speak. Karen, you there?
Hi, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Hi. So I, I just wanna make sure that I'm getting this clear 'cause it seems that it's kinda going back and forth. Originally, it was that you wanted a plan of what the inside is gonna look. Am I understanding that correctly?
No. Inside the store, you said?
Yeah.
No, no, we need the plan outside and the facade and outside.
Okay, so, so the plan that you have outside apparently was distributed a, a few months ago or whatever for a different business. So basically, now they've updated that to show you that there would be 13 cars in the drive-through before it got to the highway, correct?
Yeah, that's what you brought, that's what you bringing for us.
Right, okay. So I guess my question is, so what do you wanna see in a site plan to get this approved?
Well, you need to get an engineer and he'll explain to you what the site plan is.
Okay, so we have the engineer.
I don't know, if you develop a project before, you'd understand. It's hard to explain. If you don't understand, your attorney could explain to you what the site plan, site plan review is. This isn't just bringing a paper and showing cars on it.
Can I interrupt for one second now?
Yeah.
There is an application with a list of everything that's required in the site plan, which you can get at the building department, I mean, the planning.
Yeah, through the chair and, so Karen, this would be something we can chat about specifically, the application process. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. So I think where I wanna do then would be to keep this open, to allow for that ability to do site plan, but a preliminary vote on the variance. 'Cause of the variance, the use, the drive-through's not gonna be agreed upon, why are we gonna do the site plan review? Is that possible?
To give you vote, we, we giving you, I wish everybody's in for the variance.
Okay, can we do a vote?
No, no. I mean, we, we in, we're not gonna re-nag on the deal. With this lady, different applicant, we might change our mind.
Okay, yep.
With Mrs. Karen, it's fine. With what you wanna do, we'll give you variance. If you wanna do what we want, what we want. Apparently, four members want you to do this. One minute, one member, doesn't matter. So apparently, you need the, the site plan and the, go ahead.
So what if the engineer comes back with the site plan review and feels that it's a detriment if it were to move, you know, it just doesn't work in terms of car flow or whatever? Then what?
It'll work. The size of the building, it'll work at the park, it'll work.
Okay. You're comfortable with that, comfortable?
While we're playing devil's advocate here, I get the applicant is justified in saying, I don't wanna spend a ton of money on an engineer and have you deny the variance. We're indicating we'd grant the variance, but we're saying, and I wanna repeat it loud and clear, we're saying we'd grant the variance provided that the site plan that we review is approved. Okay? So on that vein, are we gonna, is she gonna come back with a site plan? Are we gonna say, okay, give us money for a 53G account, now we're gonna sick our engineer on you and try to pick your plan apart?
Yeah.
Let's put that in front right now so she, I want Karen to hear it 'cause I...
Site plan and a facade.
The chair feels that this would work comfortably. I'm not comfortable, which is one of the reasons why I feel like it's tight and I wanna hear what an engineer has to say about putting that drive-through in this...
I understand the public policy. Like, like the chair said, this is where I live too. So I understand it's a chance to beautify the area. I would ask, because I know a bunch of other projects on this area, are there specific things that you're looking for over on Cranberry Highway, if you recall? Like, there's the granite and things like that or the landscaping? All of that, okay.
And she, the high, the state already did her part. Half of the job done on the highway.
Yeah.
It's only like the radius coming in, maybe 10 feet each side and the rest, Cape Cod, Burma, concrete, whatever the site plan calls for.
Yeah, just as far as some of the other projects with some of the plantings and things, I know you like to see.
It's not gonna, not some, just you gotta let your guy, it's gonna cost money, it's not cheap. So if she thinks you could do good business and she could, I think she will, generate good money and stuff, it's not gonna be cheap. If I'm personally, I would buy this property to put that money in it. I wouldn't rent it. It's gonna be quite some, it's gonna be a little expensive. But you get in a permit that's worth a lot of money. That variance worth a lot of money.
It's a lot of money to whoever owns the property.
Yeah.
Who owns it, right.
Whoever owns it, because if she leaves, it stays with the owner.
That goes, that lends to my reason for my question.
Yeah.
You know, I hate to be the tenant that goes in and spends $100,000, $200,000 to prove the property for the landlord and the landlord goes, thank you very much for raising the rent, you've done a good job.
Yeah, I don't, you, you don't have to worry about that in this circumstance.
Oh, great.
So, site plan review, six weeks probably? At least?
And spicing up the facade, like we said, maybe some. All right, so what do you, we have February 28? Oh, that's not enough?
Six weeks, I mean, be a month?
March 13.
So you're into March?
March 13.
Just trying to... It's a date.
Continue.
March 13, is that what you said?
You like?[1547.54]
Is that a Wednesday, that's the Wednesday?
That's the Wednesday.
The first meeting in March?
That's about six weeks, seven weeks. That's still first meeting, yeah?
That's still the first meeting in March?
Thirteen, twenty-seven, so pick.
Thirteen, yep.
Thirteen, okay. Can we get anything to add before, anyone in the public against or for this project before we go forward? I hear none. You guys want to add anything before we make a motion to continue? Oh, please come in. Just state your name and address, sit down.
Jonathan Kaufman, I'm actually the, the current owner of the property. I'm, I'm just concerned about, you know, the requirement to continue to spend money on this site, and, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that it could end up, you know, being detrimental, and, and the tenant may not want to move forward, and the property will continue to, to sit there as it sat there. I think this is a, you know, a, a good property, you know, the drive-throughs all around. We're looking for a, a very simple variance. We, we showed a, a site plan. You want to see, you know, how many cars could potentially queue additional signage. We've done that. You know, I'm, I'm just concerned that continuing to spend money will be detrimental to the, the deal and the project.
Yeah, but it's not simple as you think it is. You could always tomorrow go back and open a sub shop, and nobody, you can rent at a sub shop or a pizza shop tomorrow, won't change anything.
If, if there were such a, a tenant, I would, you know, be very open to that. We've had this property for lease for nearly a year now.
Right. Getting a, getting a variance for a drive-through is not a simple thing. You know it, we all know it. Your councilor know it, that's not as simple. To grant you a variance for a drive-through, it's not simple. We're not, we're not trying to stop you from doing business. I'm the business owner here, and believe me, I'd like to get a drive-through through my property, it's not that simple. And, and I know what's, what we do to the, to the business. Most of the businesses in town, if you take the drive-through away, they'll shut down. So that's your major business. And so you just think how much improving that building would do. I mean-
I could like to make a comment.
Yeah.
For this board member, it doesn't sit well to have a landlord come in front of this board and say, if you make me improve my property, the tenant may not want to rent it because I'm not willing to do the work. That doesn't read well with this member.
You know, so, so you gotta spend money to make money, and like I said, we have responsibility here for the, for the taxpayer, and we believe, maybe some other members don't believe, I believe this is part of it. And it's a great property, that's for sure, and I wish you best of luck. Just put it this way, you put a drive-through in our property, your property will be worth three times what's at worst now. And you know that. All right, anything else, anyone else? You good? Sorry, you good? All right, thank you. So can we get a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue to March thirteenth.
All right, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilor. Let's continue, we're gonna go-
Our decision deadline, I'm not sure what it is, I just want to double check that.
I think we're good on time for this one, but we could-
Look at it. What is it, Sonya, do you know?
Twenty-one, twenty-three, there is nothing set, actually. It just has the date of the original app, which was December twenty-seventh.
Advantage is ninety days from the application, so-
So we're talking close to ninety, wouldn't it be, if it's in March that we're talking?
January, March, three days off. It'll be three days off.
So December twenty-seventh was the app, so I think we need to get an extension on that.
Well, thirteen is ninety, is eighty-seven days.
Is the decision jet, deadline January thirty? No.
No, January thirty-first.
What do you mean, January?
Decision deadline? Are we talking about?
Yeah.
It's over to the right.
Yeah.
No, fifty-one, no, oh, in the wrong one, sorry. Thirty-nine dash twenty-three?
It says thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three, it's already passed.
Oh, January thirty-one.
Yeah, it was extended to January thirty-one.
So twenty-twenty-four, you're saying?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
But, so that means we need an extension on that.
Okay, so it's extended to Ju, January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four?
Yeah, we just extended-
Which is seven days from now.
We just extended the hearing until, uh, March.
Okay.
I can have Attorney Moore in what she said, I can have Paul Shaw or Maro and have our extended decision, I'd like.
Okay.
So we need to make that contingent, though, on-
Yeah, before you guys forward, leave anywhere. January thirty-first.
What do we have, twenty-one days after the, um-
Where do we, where do we-
After the meeting, so we want the extension to be at least April.
We need the extension now.
Yeah.
Good catch, Veronica. Where, where is the councilor? Sorry, councilor. We, we need, we just need an extension for a decision deadline, like, to the end of March, at least.
On this case?
Yeah.
I think it should go longer than that, because it's a plan review.
Why don't you give us one?
A month, maybe?
April.
April, May, June?
April twenty-fifth, how's that?
Perfect.
Yep, so, Councilor Morton will give us extension for thirty-nine dash twenty-three till April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we go to forty-five dash twenty-three. Josh DiOlim on a special permit and a variance for two-six-one-three Cranberry Highway.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
I'm Robert Perry, and I represent Mr. DiOlim. Introduce yourself.
I'm Joshua DiOlim.
Do you have anything new that you're gonna need to pass out tonight?
I do.
Okay.
I do, I just, the engineer's not here. He advised me today, he wasn't gonna be able to be here, and apparently dropped his plans off at my office while I was reporting the session. I doubt you've seen it. But I trust it's in conjunction with two people told him that he's alive. Thank you. I do have one other thing to give you, I may as well do it now while I'm on my feet. Couple preliminary things. The chairman asked me last time to look at the grandfathering of the lot. And I did get my research done as of today. I have not written a letter to you, but I brought you an entire copy of all of my research. I brought all of the surrounding lots back to nineteen fifty. There are deeds here, as well as the assessment sheet showing the starting point. And I, I have no question in my mind, it's a grandfathered lot, nothing's been held in common after nineteen fifty.
Even with the father's lot? The father lot was not-
The father's lot belonged, I don't even know who belongs, it belonged to my guy. My guy owns this lot, we're dealing with-
I understand, but was, did he own ever the father?
No, no, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
All right.
No, the answer is no. The father's lot was never owned, at least from nineteen fifty on, in common with this lot.
Okay. We have to deal with this.
Now, the other thing we did is Paul and I this afternoon, well, moontime because it was, did an inspection on the property to see if there were any violations. I don't know what Paul's gonna tell you, but I, I think at this point, it's probably there were no violations in effect, but Paul's the boss there.
Okay, wait, wait, so, public hearing's still open? All right, so where we at? Let's hear it. So this is the new site plan?
That's the new plan, which, as I say, it better comply with every you asked Sam to do last time in. I haven't seen it, I met with Paul, headed up to Superior Court, and I just got back in time to make it here after six-thirty, so. I am assured by Sam that this does do what you asked him to do. And I'm a little dismayed he's not here tonight.
Okay, all right, Paul, can we, what do you get out of that?
I was on-site this afternoon with Mr. Perry, Attorney Perry, and the property owner. The site is relatively clean. The residential home is set up for a two-family. Currently, the second-floor unit is vacant.
So-
That was one of the bones of contention here, is that there was a suggestion that it was being used as a two-family, which it, I guess, has been set up forever for, but it's not used, there's nobody in there, there's one tenant, ground floor only. Paul toured it with me, it certainly looked empty, no furniture, nothing up there.
Yeah, but it's still-
It was two, right.
It's still the unit, it's empty today, tomorrow is not, might not be.
Well, what do you want us to do, I mean?
You gotta, you gotta decommission it.
I mean?
It's gotta be decommissioned. Or apply for a variance for the two-family, but-
Well, I'm, I'm thinking seriously of that, quite honestly. The other alternative is a covenant on it. I mean, that's not unusual, we give you a covenant that, you know, it's not gonna be used or further onto this board. I mean, I hate to see him tear something apart that I might later come before this board and ask for a variance, he may or may not grant, but you grant it, it's ridiculous to have to, how's he decommission? Tear out the kitchen sink of the stove, or what?
Okay, and, and the site plan, you have drainage design, stormwater management, we pass them to the fire department? Has it been, would you have any inputs from everybody, sap tech, all these things?
I, I do not. Listen, I just got this today, I don't know why I didn't have it two weeks ago.
All right, Troy?
I don't have any questions at the moment.
Veronica?
No comments at the moment.
Jimmy?
I want to make sure I heard correctly. The only potential for a violation, Paul, would be the existence of a second, potentially a second family unit?
That's how it's designed at the, at present time.
It was occupied a month ago, so it could easily be occupied tomorrow.
And you're willing to give us an affidavit or something, or-
I'm willing to give you a covenant.
A covenant?
Yeah.
That it won't be used?
Won't be used or further, uh-
Till, uh, pending a decision of this board? Okay. I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that. And we're looking for more information on this?
You may or may not even come for me here.
Richard, Richard, bring anything.
What's that? I don't have anything, this is time.
All right, anyway, let's go to the public. Anyone for, in favor of this project? Against? Mr. County, you want to come forward, please? Please have a seat. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Christopher Conti? Christopher Conti, I'm the Director of Butter, twenty-six fourteen, twenty-six sixteen. And this is a letter I wrote directed to the board. That petition forty-five twenty-three is a repetitive petition of twenty-nine twenty-two that was denied on April twelfth, two thousand three. The application is both procedurally defective and contrary to Massachusetts law, Chapter forty-eight, Section sixteen. And this case should not be considered until after April twelfth, twenty twenty-five. And Section sixteen says, "No appeal, application or petition which has been unfavorably and finally acted upon by the special permit granting or permit granting authority shall be acted favorably upon within two years after the date of the final unfavorable action, unless said permit granting authority or permit granting authority finds by a unanimous vote of three members, or by a vote of four members of a board of five, or two-thirds vote of a board of more than five members. Specific immaterial changes in conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based and describes such changes in the record of its proceeding. And, and unless all but one of the members of the planning board consents thereto and after notices given to parties of interest of the time and place of the proceedings, when the question of such consent will be considered. There have been no material changes in conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based, and Massachusetts general law, Chapter forty-eight, Section sixteen, has not been procedurally followed." I've attached a copy of the decision of the petition, twenty-nine dash twenty-two. I've also included a timeline of the last petition and a timeline of this petition. I can, I can go through it, but this is exactly the same petition that they previously applied for. There's no differences. I've also, I think, included a letter of the last petition. And the decision of the board, last time, the applicant requested to withdraw without prejudice for relief to create motor vehicle service use, service towing and sales, and commercial strip zoning district, which is allowed with the special permit. Following discussion, the board did not obtain a motion to approve the withdrawal. Following multiple requests, continuations, the application, applicant has not submitted sufficient plans for review. After closing a public hearing, considering the evidence entered by the Building Commissioner, the board made a motion to deny the special permit, four-one-zero. Mr. Akabachi voted no on the motion. The motion was passed. So I think there's a procedural issue here.
I think he is right. What do you think, councilor?
Well, we discussed this last time in, if you recall. I think this petition is totally different than the last one. We've, we've cut down drastically on what we're using. We don't have really the mechanic bay, we don't have the three tow trucks, we don't have anything we had last time in. We've reduced it in order to try to make this guy happy, but I don't, obviously, nothing's gonna make him happy, no matter what. I, I think this is different, but I have to pray to your judgment, obviously. Compare the two of those, there's, there's no comparison between this and the original.
How substantially different than the first case, than the first application?
Well, number one, we're closing up a bay to particularly make him happy. Number two, we're-
What was number one?
Closing a bay.
Closing up a bay, at least one of them. We're changing around all of the drainage and the oil separators, even though I don't think we need oil separators, they're not gonna be even going on in there in that respect, but we're doing it. Just, I mean, the plan doesn't even look close to the same as the first plan, if you have that before you.
Troy, what do you think?
I don't have any questions right now.
Veronica?
I, reviewing what was discussed at the last original hearing, Mr. Conti provided some of the minutes for that. And also reviewing what we had before us, I believe that when we denied it, we had motioned to continue. I made a motion back when it was decided upon, and it was denied. And the board agreed unanimously that they didn't want to continue it, and it was clear that he wouldn't be able to come back for two years when we made that motion. And I don't, I personally don't, it's still a motor vehicles type permit that he's coming for, I don't see a substantial change from that.
Jimmy?
No comments.
Richard?
No comment.
What's your wishes? What do you think?
Well, I think it's a decision the board has to make. I, I mean, I, I don't agree, obviously. We made substantial changes.
Section sixteen is very clear. It's, I don't see substantial changes, you still have, I know you closed the door, that's not a substantial change. It's, the, the building's still there. It's not like you have, you don't have any building, and you built it smaller building, a different-looking building. The layout's still there, the structure's still there, there's no substantial changes in it. That's my opinion, and I think it's hard, hard to, I, I can't, I personally can't violate that section at all like that. We had the issue prior before us. And I think that prior applicant, I saw they were gonna be tonight, they have, I talked to town council, and it stands. The only way we could revise it within fourteen days of the decision. At the time of the decision of denial, we could have, like, re-nagged on our vote and reopen it, but apparently, it's been a lot longer than this.
Yes.
So I believe we got another year to go.
Well, if, if that's what the board thinks, when's the next meeting? What is this, this is, the next meeting is, is when?
Twelve, twelve or thirteen.
Yeah, okay, so, so I'm out of the country then at the next meeting. The one after that must be the last week of February, correct?
Fourteen, I'm sorry. Fourteen or twenty-eight.
February.
Yeah, I'm gone fourteenth, I'm-
Move to twenty-eighth, February.
Twenty-eighth, is that the next meeting after that? I'm here. I'd ask you to put this over until then, and let me submit a written document to you people, setting forth in full my, my position on this issue.
So, is forty-five twenty-three a new application, or is it the old application reopened?
No, he, he opened a new one. It's a new one.
It's a new application.
But it should have waited two years.
And the point of order, or the point of argument right now, is whether or not-
Whether or not they're different.
Forty-five twenty-three is a legitimate application.
Well, whether it's different than the one that was-
Whether it's different enough, different to be heard.
That's basically what the-
And that's what you want till the twenty-eighth to, to bear it?
Yeah, I'd like to have something before the board in writing, no matter which way this goes.
All right. Before we go forward, any part, anyone else would like to speak anything from the public? Mr. Conti, you good?
So, so he's gonna submit a document stating the specific-
He's gonna submit the clarification of the matter, so we know where we're going.
So, easy question, a continuance.
Right, he wants to think continuance to bring us clarification of the case.
Of what the substantial changes have been.
Exactly.
And then the board will look at that and decide whether-
Either we continue, or we say it's useless.
And then it has to go to a planning board, too, is, is the section?
The plant, the, the Section sixteen speaks about planning board. If the planning board is a granting authority, it is the zoning board, so it's a zoning board.
I think you're right there.
It says and, though, the law says and, and it's, we can't rewrite the statute.
And if it's, if it's applicable, but in this matter, once you go to zoning, when you have a variance, it becomes a one-stop shop, so it does not go, you've never been to planning board, so how are you gonna appeal it with them? I understand, I read it very well, I was town council today. It does read like this, but it's not the fact.
But I guess, I would like, I guess maybe Attorney Bowen to help interpret the law there for the town?
Well, I'll ask him again, I was with him today, but I'll ask him again.
Oh, I thought Mr. Conti was gonna hire him.
We, I will, I will definitely reach out.
Yeah, I got an opinion.
Again.
Thank you.
All right, so we need a motion to continue this matter.
So moved, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
And the deadline is good until the twenty-seventh. Get a motion by Jim to continue until the twenty-eighth.
The deadline is good until when?
March twenty-seven.
Okay, so we still have some-
So we have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second on that?
No, that's new, I don't know what he's gonna do with it. I'll second. I'll second.
Second, Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Yeah, aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. So that's twenty-eight, forty-five.
So do you have the new material?
Yeah. Unless you want to keep it, you're allowed to keep it.
Nope.
Why not?
Jimmy, why don't, yeah, keep them unfiled.
What's that?
Yeah, just keep these unfiled.
Yep.
Let me talk to J.C. tomorrow, see what's up with that site plan. I keep this.
You're going to keep that? Okay.
Rich, do you want to pass yours, or do you want to keep them? You can keep any you wish, no? That's valid.
It's all right, I'll separate them, because I'll take that one for the old, the file. Put that in the other file, it didn't get put away.
All right. Fifty-four dash twenty-three, La Carda, La Cerda, for three owner in Oak Cranberry Highway?
That's mine. Robert Perry for the petitioner.
Okay.
I, I need to ask the board to continue that one. What I'm trying to do on that, and I don't have Brad here tonight either.
Which one is this guy, is that the dealership?
Yes, it is.
Agnes, Agnes Al...
Everything's asphalted, and there's, it's not up to current bylaw, but it's been in...
I, I, we don't want to waste...
You took the same position you took on Jillian's, and I understand that position. And what I'm trying to do is get the account open, so that I can put Brad in touch with Towns engineer, and see if they reach any kind of agreements that they...
There's no agreement to be reached, it needs a site plan.
Well, no, 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 I filed a site plan, I...
Huh? I understand.
Yes, I know. Yeah, I've got the information, I've just got to draft that up tomorrow. I'm not ready, is what it comes down to.
Okay, no problem. But you're, you're aware, we need a full site plan, full site plan review.
I, I'm, I'm aware of that, I'm aware of that. And I thought, and I don't, I didn't bring the file, I carry too many files around today, they're getting too heavy for me.
Yeah.
I thought Brad had that pretty much done for last time, but not satisfactory to the board.
No.
Okay?
Brad wanted a waiver on every single thing. He had nothing done, just a picture, minds want to take a picture and come in.
He had just a picture, okay, well, I haven't looked at it since then, because I'm going to try to get this other part done.
The garage, the church need to be modified to garage, let me finish, the church need to be modified to a garage, so it's going to show a plan for the building, how it's going to look, the, the oil drain, the floor drain, all these things, site plan, landscape and lighting.
Well, I understand that's what it's got to have, I didn't really, hadn't done that.
Stormwater management.
Okay.
Curb cuts, all these things.
Understood.
All right, and once, hopefully, everything works out, and you're going to need a state permit for that, so engineer would know that.
So, is...
Yes, that's correct, I hope so.
Is February twenty-eighth going to be too soon for him to come back?
Yes, it is. If you could give me that March fifteenth date I heard thrown around, I appreciate that, I'll give son to a letter tomorrow.
I think it's the thirteenth.
March one-three.
I'll continue the end of April.
If you want...
What do you want?
That March fifteenth, if it's, if it's available.
March thirteenth.
So you'll extend...
Well, it's thirteen, whatever it is, whatever.
It's, it's a lucky day, the thirteenth.
I'll give him a lucky, no matter what.
Let's, let's concentrate.
So it's March thirteenth?
So you would like a continue, it's still March thirteenth?
Yes, please.
Okay, very well.
And I will give a letter tomorrow, waving time to April.
For the decision deadline?
Yes.
Okay. All right, can we get a motion to continue?
What is it?
Fifty-four dash twenty-three to...
Fifty...
Are we on, are we on the time for decision?
Decision, so right now, that, that fifty-four twenty-three deadline decision is three twenty-six twenty-four.
He's going to give us something by April.
I'm going to give you a letter going out another month after that, Veronica, I'll get that up there tomorrow.
So we'll get the decision by April thirtieth?
That's what I figure I'm giving you, is April thirtieth.
Okay.
Okay, so, that being said, can we get a motion to continue until March thirteenth?
So moved.
A motion by Jim, do you have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. So it is moved, continue till March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I guess that's it for me, thank you, folks.
Thank you, counsel. Have a good night.
You, too.
Okay, discussion on rules of regulation, we'll continue after this. We're going to go to a public hearing, fifty-seven dash twenty-three, Mark St. John, a variance for eleven Kendrick Road.
Evening.
Hey, how are you?
Want to have a seat and bear results?
You don't.
For a second?
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at six-thirty P.M. in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., zero-two-five-seven-one, to reconsider petition number fifty-seven dash twenty-three for variance from the requirements of Article Three, Table three-twenty, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Mark St. Jean of seventeen Saltworks Way, Falmouth, Mass., seeking to obtain a farmer's brewer's license. The purpose of the company will be to manufacture beer on a research and development basis, utilizing malts produced and imported by Stone Path Malt LLC for the property located at eleven Kendrick Road, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Wareham Assessors Map one-oh-eight, what, one-zero-zero-six-J in the industrial zoning district.
Right, sir, name and address for the record?
Mark St. Jean, Stone Path Malt LLC. This, this particular will be a new, will be a new entity. My residence, seventeen Saltworks Way, Falmouth, Massachusetts.
Okay, do you want to explain to us what you do, what you making, what are you trying to make?
So what we're, what we're trying to do is be able to brew beer with our malts that we're currently manufacturing in the building. It's a, it's a differentiator in the market for us. There is one malt company out in the Midwest that has a similar type research and development brewery, and the goal here is to, to brew different beers with our malts, and to do collaborations with our existing brewing customers, to get them into the building, show them what we're doing. So this is really more of a manufacturing and a marking, a marketing initiative. We will not be, Farmer's Brewers License allows for pours and everything else, we will not be doing any of that in this, in this premise. The square footage is roughly seven hundred square feet, we're going to subdivide that space in our existing building, which is thirty thousand square feet.
So the building, thirty thousand, you only need seven hundred for that?
That's it. It's a, it's, it's, what it's called, it's a pilot system, it's a three-and-a-half-barrel system.
All right, Commissioner, it needs the use, just the need to use variance?
Correct.
Explain to me again, so you guys going to do it to manufacture it there, or to just to study it?
It's all, it's all manufacturing, and we will be selling the beer to our, to our customers who come and do collaborations. We'll also sell the beer to our sister company, Stone Path Malt LLC, to serve in our existing taproom.
Okay.
So it's, it's manufacturing, we're not doing any pours or tastings in this particular space, but we will be selling the, the beer to Stone Path Malt LLC to be served in our existing taproom.
Where's, where's that company located, the other company?
Same building, same...
Same building, it's all, yeah, Stone Path Malt LLC is, is located at eleven Kendrick Road.
Are you distributors for beer?
Excuse me?
You distribute beer?
We don't distribute beer, no. What we do is, we sell the malt, and we sell it to our customers who are the brewers, then we purchase their beer back through a distributor.
Okay.
And pour that beer in our, in our taproom. So we have a Section twelve beer online license.
Okay. Troy?
I don't have a problem.
Veronica.
I don't have a problem with it.
Jim?
I get it. Trying to, trying to be legal.
Yeah, we...
You guys are in the, you guys are in the malt and barley, you, you do the malt and barley.
Exactly.
And then, and then you, people that you make the malt for, they go make beer. Do they sell it only to you, or can they sell it to others as well?
No, we, we purchase it through a distributor who sells it to anyone and everyone.
The world, yes, but you buy some.
Distributors have distinct areas that they can sell that particular beer in, so larger brewery may have two or three different distributors based on different markets.
So the guys that brew the beer, they can all sit around and taste each other's beer, and buy a beer, and critique each other on a small basis, and...
For, for us, it's really to get our, not exist, not only our existing customers, but our new customers to our building. That's our biggest selling point right now. If you walk into our facility, it's, it's pretty impressive. And to be, to be able to offer a venue that we can, we can manufacture beer in conjunction with them, hopefully will, will result in, in more malt sales. I mean, we are a, we are a maltting company, that's first and foremost.
All right, very well. Rich, what do you think?
Well, I, I think it's a good idea, and hopefully he gets a, comes up with a, a hit of a beer, and doesn't have to do this anymore.
Come some madam or something. Anyone on the public or on Zoom in favor of this matter? Anyone against? None? Anything, sir, before we close? All right, can we get a motion?
I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
A motion by Jim, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, that's aye as well, Nazee. So it's closed, wishes.
Let's, let's grant the request as, let's grant relief as requested, as a, is it a variance, is it?
Yes, a variance.
As a variance, okay.
Oh, we can't request any samples?
You have to come to the taproom for that.
I'm just kidding.
All right, we have a motion to grant with the findings, the meat stature requirement of Chapter MGL forty-eight, Section ten, and it's with the standard condition, we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye, Carrie's, five-zero, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome, good luck.
Can I have that paperwork back for the folder?
All right, fifty-eight dash twenty-three, Samyatt Finney, used variance on nineteen Nicholas Drive. All right, I'm going to accuse myself, I have a conflict, I sold this house, so...
Okay, I'll, I'll read it in and...
You have these people to decide your fate.
You can hang around, though, can't you?
Yeah, I'll hang there, just...
In case we have a question, so.
Yeah.
Is this a variance? Okay, let me read it in first, and answer my own question. Is two going this way, one going this way, thank you. I'll put one here in case he wants to see it. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at six-thirty P.M. in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number fifty-eight dash twenty-three for a used variance from the requirements of Article Three, Table three-twenty, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Sam, Sami, how am I saying your name?
Samyatt.
Samyatt, sorry, Samyatt.
It's okay.
Samyatt Finney of nineteen Nicholas Drive, Wareham, Mass., seeking relief through the building commissioner's notice of violation for the property located at nineteen Nicholas Drive, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Assessors Map fifty-seven, what, WS-one-three, in MR thirty zoning district. So, what was the violation here? You guys find it yet? What did you do?
I built a basement, a finished basement.
You built a finished basement, that's the violation? So you finished your basement?
Yes.
Okay.
And turned it into an apartment.
Yes.
So...
What's that?
Is that finished? Is that finished?
Finished, is that finished?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what part.
No, the, the, the fact that you finished it is one level, and the other level of this is that you made a secondary residence in you.
Oh, okay.
You made it an apartment. MR thirty, it's owned MR thirty, not allowed. Accessory apartment. Give the board a minute to read the commissioner's letter, because we're seeing it for the first time, I'm seeing it for the first time.
Sure.
So it looks like you've got a bit of a problem here. So I'm reading the building inspector's notice of violation real quick, and if I read it quick, and you can nod or stop me, it looks like you went down there and turned your basement into an apartment, did the work yourself, did your own plumbing, did your own electrical, didn't have any of it inspected, and the inspector now wants you to take the sheetrock off the walls, take the insulation out of the walls, apply for a new permit, and have the work performed by licensed tradesmen, is that correct?
What is the insulation part?
Is the, are the walls insulated?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so if you put insulation in the wall, it's hard for anybody to inspect the building, to see what's behind it. So he wants, am I right, you want the installation, insulation?
Yes, but I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, the biggest thing is the use. It's an independent space, isn't, there's no, it's not even a stairway from the basement to the first floor, this is an independent apartment, fully set up.
So it doesn't have a secondary, it doesn't have an egress, it doesn't have an...
As egress, what I'm saying, it's, it's an independent space, there's no stairwell, you can't even...
It's not an accessory apartment, it's a second...
It is an accessory apartment, definitely is an accessory apartment.
Okay.
It's totally independent of, of the, of the main house.
Okay.
So, it's not just decommission, it's, it's the use.
So, the use would need, it would need to be approved before she even has to think about?
Yeah, before we even get to that step, correct.
Is she even allowed to have it?
No, no.
So it's a not...
It's not allowed.
MR thirty accessory apartment, not allowed?
It's a...
Is it?
It's a seven thousand square foot lot with fifty foot of frontage.
Okay, so she's not allowed because she doesn't have the frontage or the lot size? MR thirty would allow a two-family home.
Two-hundred feet of frontage and forty-five thousand square feet.
Okay, so she doesn't qualify?
No.
Period.
So, can I?
Go ahead.
So, just to catch me up, so I see the two thousand fourteen, she applied for, got a permit for an addition, twenty-four by twenty-four? Mm-hmm. Now, so, that's a, and that's a full foundation over there, I didn't think there was full foundations allowed in that. It's not in the flood zone. Or is it not in the flood zone? Correct, yep, so the addition was built with a full basement. The main house, when originally built, was built with a crawl space. Okay, so I see, I see some inspections, but I don't see all this stuff for the building department, this is what's in question? The fact that you didn't get called for site, sign off? No, not, absolutely not, no. I'll start over. Okay, so it's just mainly the use. It was brought to our attention that she was renting an apartment in her basement. Okay. So I went there, and the notice of her, that she was renting was right on the front So I went there and the notice of her, that she was renting was right on the front door. So I went down, she showed me the room. Like I said, it's an independent apartment. It's not allowed. It wasn't permitted, nothing was permitted. Electrical, plumbing, the building, none of it.
I get it. Nicholas Drive was a 40B development. If I remember correctly, the lots are quite small there and.
Correct. Again, this is a 50-foot frontage, maybe 7,500 square feet.
So what we've got in front of us is that there's been a note, you've been given a notice that you're in violation. What you've done is wrong. You've been given it in writing. And you're coming to us and saying overturn his decision?
No, that's not what I'm coming to.
Okay.
I'm asking you what I need to do to make it right. And I did get, like, I didn't add any, all I did was finish the inside. I got the basement approved when I did the original. Like, it never had an access.
Right.
Like, for the front or the back, when I originally did the foundations of the house, it never had one. I didn't plan on making that a department. My daughter lost her housing, so I did it real quick during COVID and that was it. And now I was trying to rent it out to recoup some of the money. And if I have to take whatever measures I have to take in order to make it right, I'll do that. So no, I'm not asking for.
Well, and when you say make it right, you mean?
Well, when I read the letter, it was like.
Decommission it?
Get it inspected. I don't know exactly.
Make it right according to the, if I'm interpreting the bylaw correctly, making it right means remove it.
Remove it altogether and don't have it inspected?
There's nothing to inspect. Am I right? If she removes it, there's nothing to inspect?
So what am I removing? Like the bathroom and the plumbing and?
The use is not allowed, that's the first issue. So once we determine that the use is not allowed, then the next step would be for it to be decommissioned. So that would include the walls, like you said, stripped down, insulation removed. She may finish her basement, but she would have to start over. So that starting over process would be remove the sheet rock, the insulation, the wiring could stay, but all the plumbing work would have to be decommissioned. That point start with a new permit. We're going to inspect the frame. She did the wiring. We would not expect, inspect that. State of Massachusetts allows a homeowner to do her own wiring. And then the normal process from there to produce a finished basement, not another apartment.
So in order for it to be a finished basement, wouldn't she need interior access to the basement or?
She doesn't, it doesn't, wouldn't have free flow through the house, no. She would have to go outside and come in through the walkout slider.
And that's allowed? I'm just trying to get another.
I can't see why. It wouldn't be allowed.
You can't see why it would be allowed?
Wouldn't be allowed.
Not be allowed?
Correct.
So if she wanted to have a finished basement, family room?
Mm-hmm.
Whatever, she can have it, it's part of her, part of her home, her single-family home.
That's correct.
It, it, is it below grade? Can it be a bedroom down there?
They have excavated around the foundation and added full-size egress windows with window wells, which are acceptable for the second means of egress.
Okay. Okay.
So main issue here is that the building department has, it's an illegal apartment.
I get it.
Okay.
I get, I get it. I get it, I get. She's not saying I didn't do it. She's, she's here saying, okay, I did it. You know, we had a situation, had a family member that needed a place to live and we provided them a place to live. Your family member is not there anymore?
Oh, she's back.
She's back?
She is.
And she's living down there?
She's, goes periodically, in and out.
In and out, okay, okay. But it's not like she's back and she's upstairs in your portion of the home.
Uh, yeah, she is.
She is?
Both places, yeah.
Okay, okay. So then anybody on the board can jump in at any time. It appears to me that the commissioner's notice of violation is proper. You've got a violation. You've got an illegal apartment. You can't have it there.
Okay.
And unless somebody in the board says, clears their throat or says, wait a minute, we might be willing, I don't think the board's going to be willing to overturn or grant you a variance for a second unit on Nicholas Drive. I'm familiar with the street. And if, if, if we said you can have a two-family there, then everyone on Nicholas Drive would, I'm not saying they would, but they'd have a reason to come in and say, I'd like to turn mine into a two-family too. Good way, good way to make some money, you know?
Yeah.
Can't do it. You know, I'm, so. It looks to me like the board will uphold the building commissioner's decision that you are in violation. And it looks to me like the board won't grant you a special permit or variance to have a second unit on your site. That said, you said you wanted to make it right. Listening to the commissioner, what you would need to do in order to make it right would be take the sheet rock off the walls, take the insulation that was used to save heat.
I think it's sprayed.
It's what?
It's sprayed.
Sprayed, it's sprayed in?
Yeah.
So when you sprayed it in, the plumbing and the wiring is all sprayed in with it?
Uh, yes.
Foam, spray foam insulation. Well, you've got a real, you've got a real problem on your hands.
I do. A very expensive problem on my hands. But that's my problem.
Okay. So I don't know, anybody on the board got any thoughts on this?
I, I just, it's, to have the apartment there, every, like you said, everybody would like to have an apartment, be able to put one on and get some income, so.
But it's not only that, if we.
But it's just the size of the lot. I mean, I went by it today. I can't believe how we got all that work done inside that little space.
I got the, I got.
I'm just saying, just as.
I'm already, so I'm not really, I'm not taking up any more space.
No, but I'm just, I'm just saying, I went by, I just saw the amount of work that was done in that little, I mean, those lots are only, what, 50 feet wide?
Mm-hmm.
By a couple hundred feet long. I mean, they're tiny.
Take up any more space.
No, 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 we're not saying you, you're encroaching on somebody else's property. He's talking about what you have managed, what you've managed to fit into, within your, the envelope of your home. It's, he's finding it interesting. The problem we have is if we grant, if we said, oh, we're going to give you relief and anybody was injured or harmed as a result of the work you did, it's basically the town saying, what you did is okay. So if somebody dies down there, they can, you or the heirs or the family could come back and say, hey, the town said it was okay. Now the person's dead, we want, you know, $10 million. Well, make it 20. Never mind, we'll take 30. You know? Because it was done without being inspected. And then this board said, it's okay. We can't do that. Because we're basically, we're putting the town liable for what you've done and we can't do that. So I'm afraid if we took a vote tonight, we'd vote against you as far as, you're asking us to say it's not a violation. It is. I think by your own admission, it's a violation. You know you did it. You're not denying you did it. The building commissioner's saying the, the solution is open it up so he can go in there and see what you got. You have spray and, spray foam insulation.
I have everything. To where the plumbing is, everything's open.
If, if they can expose the plumbing and the wiring, is that going to be adequate? Is that?
The plumbing needs to be removed. It was done by the homeowner. It needs to be done by a licensed plumber.
Can't even get a licensed guy to go in there and say it's.
I don't know anyone that would put their name on someone else's work.
I do.
Can we, can we time out?
If they do.
If we're going to redo the plumbing, then you can just put it back in. There's not supposed to be any plumbing in there that can accommodate an apartment, right?
I guess.
It's a bathroom.
Well, there's no kitchen.
I'll take out the kitchen if you want. I'll do what you.
If a licensed plumber said it was okay the way it is, would, would the building department be willing or do you want to see it gone and redone?
That's our policy.
Your policy?
It goes on every weekend, all through town. We find them day after day, week after week.
And your policy?
So the policy is take it down to the studs to slow, to slow this down.
Okay.
So this apartment, it actually, it's relatively safe, the way she built it with the access out the back and dug down the windows, but we're finding these in basements, we're just a plain solar windows.
Right.
My everything is.
I understand that. It's not an allowed use and it wasn't permitted and it wasn't inspected.
Agreed, but I did do everything to code. I know that it's not permitted, but I have fire alarms, I have.
There's a process to be followed and.
Completely understand that. I'm just letting you know that I wouldn't put my own daughter or anybody else in harm's way in my own home is also what, that's where I reside. So I did do something wrong and I'm more than willing, I'm here.
The discussion, I'm sorry, but the discussion should go.
Through the chair, yeah.
Through the chair. And it shouldn't continue back and forth.
I gave him some latitude just because of the situation. I believe, I believe you probably did do a good job. I think the commissioner feels as though you did a good job. He just can't, as I explained before, we're in a position, he's in a position, this board's in a position that we can't vicariously or intentionally or unintentionally transfer the liability of what's been done from you to the town. Right now, the burden's on you and there's written notice that what you've done is wrong. If anybody, you know, we really don't want anybody to be hurt, don't get me wrong. But if anything happened down in that area, the town has insulated themselves or isolated themselves from any liability to a degree. And the best, the best, I, I mean, we cannot, well, I shouldn't say we cannot, it's going to be up to the members of the board to vote. Somebody's going to have to make a motion. I would suggest that maybe the best thing that could happen tonight would be that you would ask for a continuance.
Okay.
And ask for time to maybe work with the building commissioner and the building department, get things open, get things to the point where when you come back, you could say we're in conformity or attempting or approaching conformity and then by so, and request that we put off any fines until this is resolved. We'll keep the, keep the file open. You know, right now, right now, he could say you're in violation, get it out of there in 30 days. On day 31, you got a $300 a day, a $350 a day violation. What I'm suggesting is if you continue, and we might be able to say, we'll postpone, I guess, any fines until this matter is voted on or closed by this board. But in the meantime, when you come back, you got to come back and report to this board that you've been working with the building department and the commissioner to come to some form of a resolution. Does that sound fair to the board members?
I, I just don't know, I mean, I think we're going to be voting on.
We're not voting.
Well, the, the whole purpose of this is for us to vote on the variance, yes or no. And I feel like the applicant is already talking to the commissioner, that's really, I don't, I don't know. I understand what you're trying to do, maybe, maybe to, are you trying to protect the applicant a bit, a button to allow her to do?
Well, I'm trying to keep the town insulated, isolated from any liability. We're not giving, we're not telling her what she did is okay. What we're saying to her is, okay, we're not hitting you with $300 a day until you correct it. We're going to hold off on the $300 a day, but come back to us in two weeks or four weeks and express, and have the commissioner express that there's been progress made in correcting this. Then at that point, we can tell her, no, we're not giving you a, a, a variance, your variance is denied, but you've avoided a fine. I'm just trying to avoid the fine, that's all. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Has there been a letter to, of a fine being imposed? I guess is the question.
There's a notice of violation right here.
The violation it tells you.
In the packet that you've got.
I didn't see the, I didn't get that part of the, and I'm.
So when there's a notice of violation, they've got a specific time by which to cure it. And then on that date, a fine kicks in of 300 or 350 dollars a day and continues thereafter until it's cured. If I may, Mr. Chair. Go ahead. Yes, please, I'm happy to have your input.
I don't think the board, we don't have jurisdiction of building code. This is a commissioner, building department matter. We cannot import, the, the fine commissioner is on construction without a permit, not under variance, right?
Right.
So you can't impose or not impose or relieve on it. This is not your, our jurisdiction. Only our jurisdiction decide if you're going to grant a variance or not. Violating a building wall with inspection or inspection, this is not our jurisdiction. We can't even, it's not a problem or it's our jurisdiction. So we can't tell her, take the wall, put the wall, this is the commissioner who would do this, not us. That's a building code violation, not us.
Yeah, we weren't suggesting that we were telling her.
I know, but we cannot waive the, the violation fee also. This is the commissioner. So that's something you'll have to take with the building department. So the board here, you only guys, you have a vote if you're going to grant the variance or not. That's it. If you're willing to give a variance for a two-family or not, everything else is a building code violation.
Is that the way you guys see it? That simple? If that, that makes it easier for us?
I do tend to agree, and again, I don't see.
Make it easier for Paul?
I agree with what the chairman said.
Okay.
Well, I'm not the chairman now, but that's.
Yeah, that's, no, that's, I'm okay with all that.
And, and that being said, but maybe, I mean, for my own justification, I guess, I, I understand that it says that there's a violation. She went and applied for the, for the appeal to try and get this through. I don't see a note of a fine. Maybe I'm missing the amount? Did I miss it?
Last line.
The last line? So I guess, I don't know if we can maybe help to get some clarification on when that will be imposed.
I'm willing to work with the, the applicant. I just want that department gone, the use gone.
So.
She wants to have a finished basement, she's allowed to have a finished basement, permitted and inspected.
So it's pretty easy. The chairman, Nazee was right. Our job is to either uphold your decision that there's a violation or not, and that's all we have to do. We have to either say we're overturning his decision or we're, we're upholding it. And it appears, without trying to lead the board, but it appears to me like the board feels as though we're going to uphold your decision. But somebody may, needs to make that in the form of a motion.
Oh, okay, so this application was not for a variance?
This was, this was an application, they had, they had to seek.
It was a, a use variance.
It was a notice of violation and then I gave her a remedy. So she, she could either decommission it or she could come and ask, seek relief from you for a use variance.
So that we have two things before us then?
No, just a variance.
The only thing we have in front of us is a use variance.
We have two things, we have two things, I believe, in front of us, just for clarification. We need to determine whether or not we're going to overturn the commissioner's decision. And if we did, then it would be a variance. But actually, we have to decide on a variance.
If we get, if we grant a variance, then we've overturned his decision. If we don't grant a variance, then we've upheld his decision. It's that, it's.
So we have to vote on the variance?
Correct.
And then that would, right, okay.
That's right. So.
One way or the other.
Yeah, no, you know.
Yeah.
Somebody's going to make a motion that we deny the use, or somebody's going to make a motion that we grant a use variance. And then it's going to be seconded, and then we'll vote. And then we'll be done.
So I'll make a motion to uphold the building inspector's decision to take, what's that?
Close the public portion of the hearing. Hey, but, wait, before we do that, anybody here that wants to speak online or in the room? Got any hands raised over there? Okay, so now let's close the public portion.
I make a motion to close the public hearing portion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, made, motion's been made by Richard and seconded by Troy. Sorry for the first names. We close the public portion. All in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, so it's closed. So now we need a motion to either grant or deny a use variance.
So again, I'll make a motion to uphold the building inspector's violation notice, and.
And therefore, you're denying a use variance.
And denying the use variance.
Okay, do we have a second?
Voting on two things, okay.
Second.
So it's been moved by Mr. Simple and seconded by Mr. Larson that the variance, the request for a use variance be denied. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So you're done with us? You got to deal with the building department. You, you can't have, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry you're in this situation.
Need to, thank you.
Yep.
Come see me.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have these back so we can vote on our regulation, our rules?
Let's go discussion on rules and regs for the special permit.
Do you want to hand it back?
All right, Kenny, you there?
He's asleep. Just wake him, just shake the computer a little bit. Make it, make some backbeat or something. Make his speakers squeal. Turn the volume up.
Stop me awake.
Oh, there he is.
So this, you should have a new draft of the rules and regulations before you.
If, if I may, I have to go. I have a commitment, so you guys can, whatever you guys decide on the regulation, I went through them. It looks pretty good for me. So whatever you guys decide, is that all right?
It's okay with this.
What's that, Smack?
I was just.
Can I have your vote?
No.
I was just curious. The last time we were here, it was talk about turning in the green cards.
Yes.
For the thing, is that going to be our responsibility that we have to make sure that they're all correct?
Yes, well.
Wait a minute, why? Well, then, why did, why did I hear in the meeting that they had to be brought in, put in a folder, and then we have to go through them? That's what was discussed.
In the old days, that's how it used to be. If Sonia's kind enough to check them for us before she sends them to us, but we should look at them and approve them. That's part of the public hearing.
It takes so much time.
I know.
From you guys as a board. Imagine sitting here.
But that's what I'm asking. Shouldn't that be done even before we get here? I mean, why is it our responsibility to check to make sure that the abutters, the abutter cards are all there?
What, what happened, the town would issue us a list of the abutter and the abutter of 300 feet, and we'd just go by the green card or the receipt. Some people, like in vacation, they don't sign the green card, check it. That's how it always, always used to be, and that's how other towns do it in Massachusetts. She could.
I have the receipts way ahead of time, so they're, they're sent to me as soon as the applicant sends out the abutter notification, so I, I have it.
So usually, when the hearing comes in, it's not always 50 people. Like usually, like 10 abutters, 15. Usually, when he's reading the thing, maybe Veronica or Rich, I mean, you or Troy looking at it, checking the list. It's always, we've done it for 30 years here. I mean, I've done it for, when Mr. Ferrera, Garcia Sol wasn't here, and the previous one, what's his name, the power guy.
So just for instance, if something gets skipped over, like.
Jerry Harkins, all of them, you just, they used to always do it. Mary.
So are you?
So, so what I'm, what I'm saying is that I, I noticed that we had them handed to us, and that's why I'm bringing it up. Instead, we were supposed to check it. Now, what if there's something that falls through? Is it the person's fault, or is it all of our fault?
The person normally didn't.
Well, no, no. But I'm asking a legit question. Like, you're asking us that it's a responsibility that's thrown on us that we haven't had.
I would say the board is responsible.
I believe somebody got fired over something like that. So I want to know why is it.
If we have a list, 15 people, we check 15 people. One is missing, they'll always have, if the receipt is not here, nor the green, you don't need the green card. Like I said, you could be in vacation, never signed for it. But as long as the receipt here, we did our job. If the receipt is not here, we can't open the public hearing. That's mean that person was never sent a notice.
But Rick wants to know who's responsible if they missed something. So I would say the board as a whole. I mean, if we're giving you the, or let's say you take on that role. If you missed someone.
No, no, I mean, all it is that.
I feel that we, we do above and beyond, and there's a lot going on.
I know, but.
There's a lot going on. And I don't want to be my responsibility and have it fall through the cracks, that's why.
You're right.
You don't want to get fired. You'll be getting zero dollars.
I'm just saying that there's, there's, the heat are going to be held to the fire if something happens, right?
We had this conversation early on when these things first came in. If I recall, I brought this up, and I said, I think it should be the responsibility of the applicant to.
That's what I thought.
Identify who the abutters are, the abutters to the abutters. They should bring it down, just like they always did to the assessor's office and say, this is what, because the assessors still have to bless it. If I read the direction, the rule, the paper, right? The assessors still look at it and say, yep, okay, this is the official list.
No, 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 it doesn't work like this.
We're taking it away from them?
You can't. It's the assessor who dictates abutter to your abutter. We can, or the applicant. You can, that's the state law. The assessor makes the list, the applicant signed, sent the notice. And that's how it is, that's how applied throughout the state. We make a mistake, I guess we reopen the public hearing. I mean, mistakes happen.
So I guess, why are we trying to shift the responsibility from the assessor to us?
That's what I'm asking.
It's not the assessor.
It's not the assessor. The planning has to review.
I mean, we, we went through it, and I get to it, and it's, you know, it says, oh, the homeowner, the applicant, it's all responsible for this. But then they're supposed to be dumped on the desk, and we're supposed to go, oh, yeah, it's here. And then we miss one, something happens.
Well, we can't say that the applicant is going to be honest and tell us that everybody, well, you know what I mean? Like, somebody has to verify whether or not it's been done.
Right.
They're trying to take it away from planning to the ZBA, if I'm correct.
I, I have been verifying, I mean, I may have been submitting, I mean, before I even submit the complete application to the board, I make sure that I have a checklist. And I've actually been posting the certified mail receipts on the town's site. So you can, you can make sure that all those receipts are on there.
Yeah. I, I have, I, I have no problem with that. I would actually do it if, while you're reading stuff in, I have no problem with going through the green cards.
In front of the folder, Jim, if you can see that there's a checklist, all of those abutters, I make sure that they match the abutters list that they obtained from the assessor's office.
Although I might be the only one that feels that way, so.
Well, we could alter it, but that's how it's done. I mean, we don't like it, but that's how it's done. That's how it's always been done.
Nazzy's got a promise, and he's trying to get out of here.
But think about it.
Ken says, Ken says the rules are good the way they are? Or what do you say, Ken?